Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm calling the Committee of the Whole meeting to order. I'll first move to approve the minutes of our July 17th and September 18th meetings.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. And given the likelihood of executive session, I'd like to bring up Resolution 2023-52 next. And with that, are there any -- is there anything that wouldn't be an executive session, Director Vargo, that we ought to discuss first before?
Thank you, Council President. No, everything should go in executive session because it involves the potential for imminent litigation.
Okay. Very good. Well, then I will move to enter into executive session for the purposes of conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Schachner.
It's more of a scheduling thing, and I'll defer to what -- where the body, I guess, which I have to anyway. But I see we have members of the public here on the other issue. I wonder if we want to -- I don't know how long that this conversation's going to go. I don't know if we want to dispense with what we have the public here for prior to going to executive session.
That's a good question. I also don't know how long the reason for which people are potentially present would go either. And so I want to make sure we dispense of this item no matter what. One. But two, Director Vargo, pursuant to Councilman Schachner's question, do you anticipate this being a long conversation?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not. It's a very straightforward settlement. It's very much in the city's interests. I think you'll understand when you hear. So I would project 20-minute meeting would be more than enough. I say that humbly. Your decision, obviously.
Understood. Understood. That should allow time for at least some discussion on both items.
I'm sure having two lawyers in the room won't make it any longer. I'm being sarcastic.
Were you at the last meeting?
Yeah, right.
Just kidding. Love you guys. Any further discussion on the motion? Well, then, let's do a roll call vote. Baker?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Keppel?
Yes.
Litten, yes. Schachner?
Yes.
Marx? And that motion passes. We will move into executive session in the adjacent chamber. And let's include members of the Law Department, members of council staff, Mr. Papke -- Ms. Janir Papke, excuse me, and any members of the administration that it would seem appropriate to invite. [inaudible] All right. First, I'll move to exit executive session.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing, none. Baker?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Keppel?
Yes.
Litten, yes. Schachner?
Yes.
Marx? And that motion passes. We are backed fully and readily for our next agenda item, communication from Councilwoman Marx. Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you, Vice President Keppel. I'll move to recommend adoption of Resolution 2023-52.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing, none. Baker?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Keppel?
Yes.
Litten, yes. Schachner?
Yes.
Marx? And that motion passes. We are backed fully and readily for our next agenda item, communication from Councilwoman Marx. Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you, Vice President Keppel. I'll move to recommend adoption of Resolution 2023-52.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. Oh, and allow me to excuse the -- move to excuse the absence of Councilmember Rader.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. And now, without further ado, we move to a communication from Councilmember Marx regarding Animal Safety and Welfare Advisory Board recommendations. Councilmember Marx, did you want to kick things off? Or perhaps the administration? I didn't -- quite all right.
I think the administration has some PowerPoint they want to go through. Did you want to start with that?
Okay. All right. It originated from your communication, so I wanted to defer to you first. But Director Dillinger, did you want to -- and I -- do I do something? Ah! Yeah. Rat PC, I think. Oh, okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of council. So, yes, at the last council meeting, there was a communication presented. So the administration met. We kind of deliberated, went over that proposal, and just kind of want to share some of our thoughts on the creation of a Shelter Operations Manager position. So I know that we have the Animal Shelter Supervisor, Jack Crawford, with us tonight, too. So there may be some bits that he chimes in on just because that's his area of expertise. But nonetheless, we will get started. Okay. So the first thing I thought was important was to kind of go over some of the things that we already do at the shelter. What is actually the responsibilities of our shelter? So on here, we go over, you know, we are operating a municipal animal shelter. We are not a rescue facility, and that's not the future of our new animal shelter. So even if we have a new facility put together, that's -- we are not a rescue. I mean, rescues are great. They exist. There's many in Northeast Ohio. Ohio as a whole, but that's not what the city provides. We provide essential needs for stray animals that are found within the city of Lakewood, and then we make every effort to return those animals to where they belong if they're lost. Or we do have a foster and adoption program that we make available as well. You know, I think there were some questions whether we're meeting the essential needs, which the definition of essential needs are absolutely necessary, extremely important. So, yes, we provide them shelter. They come into our shelter into a cage. They are provided water, food, and basic medical care. So anything that they could possibly need if they are evaluated and decided to be an animal that can be put into the adoption or foster program, we provide those medical -- that medical support to them. And then additional medical concerns are addressed on a case-by-case basis. So, you know, Jack and the staff at the shelter are trained to learn what are medical conditions that we can take care of that keep the animals viable. What are things that unfortunately we won't be able to do? And then they work with different providers that can make sure that those animals are back up to the right medical standard before they would go into care. And then -- I don't know if it's going to let me click on this. This is our City of Lakewood Animal Shelter website. So you'll see on here, if you go to Animal Control, it has, you know, a plethora of information. It has our hours. It talks about different resources, how you can become a volunteer, wildlife trapping. So, you know, we have a lot of information on our website that really goes into detail about our animal control and shelter operations. So I wasn't sure how well everyone was versed on the staffing of our animal control. It is a division within our police department. So they report up to our administrative captain, which is Captain Gary Stone. So then we have our Animal Shelter Supervisor, which is currently Jack Crawford. It was Elaine Hearn for many years before she retired. And then we have two full-time animal control officers, and they each work different shifts as well. So we staff the shelter. When we're fully staffed, we have all three positions. Seven days a week, we have someone there. We're operating within the city. This, we thought, was important to kind of go into, like, what is La Swab's responsibilities, right? So there are advisory board for the health and welfare of all animals throughout the city. So what you'll see over here is, on our website, these are kind of things that La Swab has done in the past, or talking points, educational things, they've -- resources they've made available to the public. And then over here, this is directly from also the La Swab website. On our website, their portal, it kind of goes over what they're responsible for. So, you know, they're really our advisory board. I mean, that's what we call them. That's what they are. They help us with, you know, animal-specific issues. They do make recommendations. They, you know, are to work and collaborate with administration and our animal shelter. So in the proposal that was received from La Swab, they had a few talking points of things that they feel that a Shelter Operations Manager should do. And I -- so that's over here in this column, what La Swab wants. Over here are the essential functions of an Animal Shelter Supervisor, so the position that Jack Crawford already holds. And this is straight from his job description. So anything in here that's black is here in black in some form or another. He's already doing that. I have a few talking points on the other items on here. First one being introduction of animal shelter software. So this is something done across the city with all departments. We evaluate software in collaboration with the city's IT department. And at this time, due to the low number of animals in the shelter, there's just not a need for additional software at this time. And then to the -- where did I put that? Implementation of cutting-edge practices in animal care. Like I said in an earlier slide, we're providing the essential care and even beyond that if it calls for it. But our animal control officers and our Animal Shelter Supervisor are not vet techs. That's not what they're hired to do. They're not trained to do. They're not licensed. They don't have certifications to do that. That's why we collaborate with other facilities that can provide vet techs that can give that service to us. So I'm not sure what more as a cutting-edge practice in animal care they're looking for. But if they're looking for more medical care beyond essential care, that's just not what our staff's trained to do. As far as the community relations and engagement, you know, I think the administration feels that that is the point of La Swab. That's what we have our advisory board for, is to be our voice out in the community, you know, giving education and providing information to residents. And then finally, navigating the move to the new animal shelter, creating a public presence. You know, most recently, we moved our whole Human Services Department from multiple facilities to Cove. We didn't hire someone to do that. We used our department. We used our Parks and Facilities Department to help facilitate that move. So, you know, that would be a similar situation if and when the shelter is built, that we would help use our Parks and Facility staff along with Animal Shelter staff to navigate that move to the new shelter. This is going to be hard to see, and I apologize for that. Hopefully, you've heard copy. But this just goes over the different intake numbers from 2018 to 2023, year-to-date. And there is an update for 2023. We have updated numbers because this was only through September at the time we put this together. But, I mean, you'll just kind of see in general, and if, Jack, you wanted to add anything on this section, but we just don't have very high numbers of animals remaining in custody at the shelter. Usually, they're going to some sort of adoption, foster, and then they're being adopted out. And like I said, the ones that are in the care at the shelter are receiving the essential needs care. And we have many days we have no one, no animals in the shelter. We just don't have anything being kept there. So that's something to keep in mind. We often have a vacant shelter on days, too. Did you want to add anything, Jack?
Adoptions have actually increased. They're up to sixty-five percent. As of this, so far this year, we did add the October.
Okay.
The dogs and the citations have also been increased. The dogs have all been claimed, so that they're not at the shelter anymore. The citations on enforcement side have also gone up. The dogs are doing their job.
Thank you. And obviously, you'll see the low numbers, too, for 2020, just COVID-related, so. So this just kind of shows you, again, those numbers kind of showing cats versus dogs, and what happens with them at the shelter, whether they stay at the shelter. You'll see for dogs, 2022, clearly a very high number. That was the Beagle occurrence that we managed. And then the expired, adopted, disposition, so claimed, and then impounded. So this just shows you dogs versus cats over the years. Here's our shelter budget. I did ask if Director Nkotor could be here if there were any specific comments.
Quite all right.
I think the administration has some PowerPoint they want to go through. Did you want to start with that?
Okay, all right. It originated from your communication, so I wanted to defer to you first. But Director Dillinger, did you want to? And do I do something? Ah!
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President and members of council. So, yes, at the last council meeting, there was a communication presented. So, the administration met, we kind of deliberated, went over that proposal, and just kind of want to share some of our thoughts on the creation of a Shelter Operations Manager position. So, I know that we have the Animal Shelter Supervisor, Jack Crawford, with us tonight, too. So, there may be some bits that he chimes in on, just because that's his area of expertise. But nonetheless, we will get started. Okay. So, the first thing I thought was important was to kind of go over some of the things that we already do at the shelter. What is actually the responsibilities of our shelter? So, on here, we go over, you know, we are operating a municipal animal shelter. We are not a rescue facility, and that's not the future of our new animal shelter. So, even if we have a new facility put together, that's, we are not a rescue. I mean, rescues are great, they exist, there's many in Northeast Ohio, Ohio as a whole, but that's not what the city provides. We provide essential needs for stray animals that are found within the city of Lakewood, and then we make every effort to return those animals to where they belong, if they're lost, or we do have a foster and adoption program that we make available as well. You know, I think there were some questions whether we're meeting the essential needs, which the definition of essential needs are absolutely necessary, extremely important. So, yes, we provide them shelter. They come into our shelter into a cage, they are provided water, food, and basic medical care. So, anything that they could possibly need, if they are evaluated and decided to be an animal that can be put into the adoption or foster program, we provide those medical, that medical support to them. And then additional medical concerns are addressed on a case-by-case basis. So, you know, Jack and the staff at the shelter are trained to learn what are medical conditions that we can take care of, that keep the animals viable? What are things that unfortunately, we won't be able to do? And then they work with different providers that can make sure that those animals are back up to the right medical standard before they would go into care. And then, I don't know if it's going to let me click on this. This is our City of Lakewood Animal Shelter website. So, you'll see on here, if you go to Animal Control, it has, you know, a plethora of information. It has our hours, it talks about different resources, how you can become a volunteer, wildlife trapping. So, you know, we have a lot of information on our website that really goes into detail about our animal control and shelter operations. So, I wasn't sure how well everyone was versed on the staffing of our animal control. It is a division within our police department. So, they report up to our administrative captain, which is Captain Gary Stone. So, then we have our Animal Shelter Supervisor, which is currently Jack Crawford. It was Elaine Hearn for many years before she retired. And then we have two full-time animal control officers, and they each work different shifts as well. So, we staff the shelter when we're fully staffed. We have all three positions, seven days a week, we have someone there. We're operating within the city. This, we thought was important to kind of go into, like, what is La Swab's responsibilities, right? So, there are advisory board for the health and welfare of all animals throughout the city. So, what you'll see over here is, on our website, these are kind of things that La Swab has done in the past, or talking points, educational things, they've, resources they've made available to the public. And then over here, this is directly from also the La Swab website. On our website, their portal, it kind of goes over what they're responsible for. So, you know, they're really our advisory board. I mean, that's what we call them, that's what they are. They help us with, you know, animal-specific issues, they do make recommendations, they, you know, are to work and collaborate with administration and our animal shelter. So, in the proposal that was received from La Swab, they had a few talking points of things that they feel that a Shelter Operations Manager should do. And I, so that's over here in this column, what La Swab wants. Over here are the essential functions of an Animal Shelter Supervisor, so the position that Jack Crawford already holds, and this is straight from his job description. So, anything in here that's black is here in black, in some form or another. He's already doing that. I have a few talking points on the other items on here. First one being introduction of animal shelter software. So, this is something done across the city with all departments. We evaluate software in collaboration with the city's IT department. And at this time, due to the low number of animals in the shelter, there's just not a need for additional software at this time. And then to the, where did I put that? Implementation of cutting-edge practices in animal care. Like I said in an earlier slide, we're providing the essential care and even beyond that, if it calls for it. But our animal control officers and our Animal Shelter Supervisor are not vet techs. That's not what they're hired to do, they're not trained to do, they're not licensed, they don't have certifications to do that. That's why we collaborate with other facilities that can provide vet techs that can give that service to us. So, I'm not sure what more as a cutting-edge practice in animal care they're looking for, but if they're looking for more medical care beyond essential care, that's just not what our staff's trained to do. As far as the community relations and engagement, you know, I think the administration feels that that is the point of La Swab. That's what we have our advisory board for, is to be our voice out in the community, you know, giving education and providing information to residents. And then finally, navigating the move to the new animal shelter, creating a public presence. You know, most recently, we moved our whole Human Services Department from multiple facilities to Cove. We didn't hire someone to do that. We used our department, we used our Parks and Facilities Department to help facilitate that move. So, you know, that would be a similar situation if and when the shelter is built, that we would help use our Parks and Facility staff, along with Animal Shelter staff, to navigate that move to the new shelter. This is going to be hard to see, and I apologize for that. Hopefully, you've heard copy. But this just goes over the different intake numbers from 2018 to 2023, year-to-date. And there is an update for 2023, we have updated numbers, because this was only through September at the time we put this together. But, I mean, you'll just kind of see in general, and if, Jack, you wanted to add anything on this section. But we just don't have very high numbers of animals remaining in custody at the shelter. Usually, they're going to some sort of adoption, foster, and then they're being adopted out. And like I said, the ones that are in the care at the shelter are receiving the essential needs care. And we have many days we have no one, no animals in the shelter. There, we just don't have anything being kept there. So, that's something to keep in mind, we often have a vacant shelter on days, too. Did you want to add anything, Jack?
Adoptions have actually increased. We're up to sixty-five percent. As of this, so far this year, we did add the October.
Okay.
The dogs and the citations have also been increased. The dogs have all been claimed, so that we're not at the shelter anymore. Citations on enforcement side have also gone up. Animals are doing their job.
Thank you. And obviously, you'll see the low numbers, too, for 2020, just COVID-related, so. So, this just kind of shows you, again, those numbers kind of showing cats versus dogs, and what happens with them at the shelter, whether they stay at the shelter. You'll see for dogs, 2022, clearly a very high number, that was the beagle occurrence that we managed. And then the expired, adopted, disposition, so claimed, and then impounded. So, this just shows you dogs versus cats over the years. Here's our shelter budget. I did ask if Director Rangator could be here, if there were any specific comments on the budget for animal control. But I just thought that it'd be important for you to have a five-year lookback of the numbers at the shelter. So, you know, we have three full-time staff alone, so that's salaries and benefits, which is majority of the budget. And then any, anything we would need for overhead costs of the shelter itself, medical expenses, all of those things. We did reach out to other Northeast Ohio communities. These were the ones who responded, just to give you a general idea of what other communities do as far as a shelter or kennel, or how they care for animals. So, we, and I agree, I know Lakewood, we want to be superior, right? We want to be the best. And the data shows we are, we have three full-time officers. Most communities have, you know, Parma's the next closest, who does have a pretty major shelter, but that's completely run by volunteer organization. So, their correction, or their correct, Animal Control Officers operate out of there, but the shelter itself is operated by a volunteer organization. And then you'll see, like, the other individuals in our Council of Government, Bay, North Olmsted, Fairview Park, you know, they're pretty limited on their staffing. And then you have a few communities that don't do it at all, like Shaker Heights is a third party, and then North Ridgeville, they responded, they don't even have an ACO, they just use the county for those services. So, another fact that we found out is that the city of Bay Village is going through a similar review of their animal shelter right now, and their volunteer organization has raised over $50,000 to help them fund that project. So, you know, I know in years past, we've really worked with nonprofits, and specifically CLAWS, who's helped fund and help us at our shelter, and that seems to have depleted and gone down. So, now really, the city is taking on that burden of finding funding to keep things moving. Some other information we just wanted to make sure that you are aware of was back in 2022, CCLAS stopped giving volunteer support as of January 2023. So, really, the shelter has taken all of those additional responsibilities that would have been, we would have had assistance from CLAWS. We are doing that now with no disruption in public service. So, we're still able to keep up our numbers as far as the animal control side of things, or the public service we provide. And then, you know, volunteer opportunities within the shelter can be very limited, just because some days, we don't, if we don't have animals, we don't have a need for volunteers. We do have a volunteer coordinator who assists us, too, with our adoption and fostering program and finding volunteers. So, she's been a big asset to that division of helping Jack and the other animal control with the volunteer side and scheduling. And like I said, it's, they're a nice benefit to have, but these responsibilities can be handled by our three full-time staff members, if needed. If our volunteers are low, or we don't have them, it is something that we can manage in-house, and we have been doing. The last thing I have for you are just the two letters. I know one you have already received, but this is the letter that was co-signed by administration and our union members that essentially would not support a manager-level position. You know, we have an Animal Shelter Supervisor who's in our AFSCME Admin Union, and we have two Animal Control Officers that report to that person, and they're also in our union. So, we have three full-time union staff that have been doing a great job. There has not been any disruption within our shelter, and keep it running on a seven-days-a-week basis. So, you know, they, this letter just shows that the unions would not support this decision, and the other needs that we have in the city, you know, such as police, such as a sustainability coordinator to carry out our climate action plan. So, you know, we have other needs, and we are always evaluating our staff, our staffing needs, and having open conversations and dialogue, whether with directors, other unions, on what we, what's essential and what's needed for the city. So, it's just at this time, because of the other needs and things going on, we just don't feel that this would be a position to create and add to our staff at this time, with the other needs we have in the city. So, that is all I have. I'm happy to answer questions, or if Jack, you know, if there's anything more division-driven that Jack could answer, happy to do that. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Director. Colleagues, any comment before we potentially moved any, any public comment as well?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Bullock.
First, I defer to the Councilwoman Marks and Councilwoman Keppl, who, you know, put forward the proposal that we're considering tonight, so.
Yes, I'd like to, Claudia, thank you very much for putting this all together. It was very helpful. And I agree with you, our ACOs do a wonderful job. And I know that Jack was working like a one-armed paper hanger the last couple of months, running the whole shelter by himself. And he has always been very receptive and very courteous when he goes out on call, so I appreciate that very much. I think that, from my standpoint, I want to make sure that, that moving into the new shelter, that we have adequate coverage. I know we're still looking for somebody, another ACO at the shelter. And as long as, and I'm confused about the volunteer opportunities. Is that, Jack, is that something you coordinate? Volunteer, yeah, so if somebody wants to volunteer at the shelter, what, they go on the website?
Where's the mic? Hello? Okay. We, I'm not used to this. We currently do not have volunteer opportunities at the shelter. We're just a very small shelter. We're not big. Cindy, have you ever been down there?
You know, a long time, when I was on council, before I was.
So, our shelter is not big, the size of this. So, we have 18 cat kennels, seven dog kennels, and we have five kennels in the back. People come in to volunteer, they're stepping over each other. There's no room to move around. We've had, through CCLAS in the past, they had a volunteer organization, they had a shelter trainer that would come down with the people, and he would, we would have volunteers, he would schedule them in, and we would have three, four different volunteers each Saturday come in, 10 o'clock in the morning. He would show them how to clean the kennels, how to mop the floors. And that kind of worked in a way. But most of the people that we find that come in to volunteer would rather just come in and play with the animals. So, we advise them to just come in anytime during business hours and come in and socialize. You don't have to be a volunteer to come in, you're not stepping, now we don't have a bunch of people in there stepping over people. It makes it a lot easier.
So, as far as intake of the animals, when an animal comes in, that's something whoever, whoever the ACO on duty takes care of.
How do we intake an animal?
On intake, when you intake an animal.
Okay. So, if an animal comes in, whether it's trapped, you know, whether a resident brings it in, or we pick it up, it comes into the shelter, it's evaluated, and it's put it back in the quarantine room, and it's held there for 24 hours, and we look at it and watch it, and see that, how it reacts, and if it's healthy and friendly. And then if it is, then at that point, we schedule it to go in and be spayed and neutered, and gets all its vaccines, and rabies shots, and goes up for adoption.
So, you take care of the flea management, the vaccines, and spay and neuter before it goes out for adoption? And then?
That is correct.
Then the shelter manages the adoption, right? You posted on the website that these animals are available for adoption.
Yes.
And then when somebody from the community wants to adopt it, what's the process? They come in and say?
They come, they come in, and they look at the animals that they want to look at, the cat, pretty much called cats. So, they come in, I tell them, you know, spend some time, take it out, hold it, play with it. Once they decide they want to adopt, it takes about 10 minutes worth of paperwork, and $50, it's going to be 75. And they take the cat home, we put it in a cardboard carrier, and they take it home.
Okay. And so, the cat is then, or the animal is then ready to go, as far as their vaccines? And they've also been treated for fleas and everything at the shelter before they go home, right?
Yes. So, they, so when we put the, they get all the paperwork from the APL that shows the spay-neuter, they get the certificate of the one-year rabies shot. And on the APL, when we send them to the APL, they get their first vaccine, they get Synergy, which is for fleas and ticks, and the rabies shot is all done right at the APL.
And are they also chipped?
No.
So, that would be the new owner's responsibility, is to chip their pet?
Correct.
And what about making appointments for spay and neuter? Do the ACOs transport also? I know that was something that CLAWS was doing also, right?
We have, well, Lakewood Animal Shelter has four, we used to have six. We have six standing appointments every Tuesday at the Animal APL. So, we take, we have four animals every Tuesday that go down. So, if an animal comes in on Wednesday, then we hold it in the back until it's ready to go on Tuesday, the following Tuesday, to be spayed and neutered, and then up for adoption.
And how do they get to the spay-neuter appointment? Is that an ACO, or is it a volunteer that takes?
Our volunteer, we have a City of Lakewood volunteer, Molly, that schedules those, and she schedules the transport for them.
So, she schedules other people to take them? It's not that she takes them, or she?
Yes, we have volunteers that transport them to the APL.
So, if Molly wasn't there, would that be another responsibility that would fall to you?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I have, I have spreadsheets that have all the volunteers' names, phone numbers, addresses for transport, foster, that those lists are all created. And so, if Molly wouldn't need a week off and something would happen, yes, I would have time to do that.
And I'm sure that you're not short of volunteers, because so many people here in Lakewood love, we love our animals. So, I'm sure that people are willing to volunteer. I didn't know that you could come and play with the animals, though, that's interesting to hear. Probably that you don't want lots of people down there playing with the animals, because they, too, probably just get in the way. But that's good to know. So, you don't, you don't feel that there's a need to add another person to?
No.
The shelter at all?
No. As you said, for the last three months, I've been a one-armed paper hanger, and the shelter has run fine. If I had two more people, it'd be a pretty easy job. I hate to say that, but it'd be, it'd be, I'd have a lot more time to do the management side.
Well, and I have to say, I've had to call you, you know, a few times over the past several months, and you have been very responsive and on top of it. So, it's not like the community has to wait for you either, so I appreciate that.
Well, I train the ACOs to be the same way.
Well, and I feel that moving into a new shelter, I would hope that we're able, I would love to see us be able to raise money to support that shelter. You know, and I don't know who would be doing that, maybe CLAWS, maybe, maybe the city, the administration, I'm not sure, but I think it's a great opportunity to get the public involved to raise money for the shelter. People are very willing to support animals here in Lakewood. So, we could do that by selling bricks or whatever. I think that's something to look at. And I know that doesn't fall within your scope of practice or comfort, but I think it's something that we really should look at as an administration. So, thank you. I just want you to know that if there's ever an issue, I know that you have a great relationship with La Swab, so that you would take any issues to them, so they could bring it to council, and we could address whatever concerns you would have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, other questions? Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, thanks, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Councilwoman, for bringing this to the attention. Thanks to ACO Jack for, you know, your work and being here. And there's a lot of analysis in this report from the administration. Thanks also to La Swab leadership, who's here. And CCLAS is not here, but has also given a lot, or is here, has also given a lot to the community. So, a couple of questions, thoughts. So, first of all, want to absorb what's here. One quick question, are the two ACO positions filled now, we're staffed up, or?
Not yet.
We're not staffed up?
We're working on that.
We have you and whom else?
And we have Sierra.
Okay, so you and one other, but one vacancy. But you're saying that?
So, she, she came on at the beginning of October, so she's still training. So, it's still going to take her some time to be able to be on her own. It's not, you can't just come in and take over and say, this is what, she's got to learn the city, she's got to learn a lot of things, so.
That's good enough. But, but your position is that we don't even need to staff the three positions that we have?
No, my position is you need the two ACOs and the shelter manager, because the ACOs can keep the shelter open then Monday, seven days a week.
Okay.
So, you have, you have someone that'll work Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, then you have another one that'll work Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Yep, okay. I just misunderstood you, so thanks for clarifying. So, the, you know, just the big picture here is, I think Lakewood Animal Welfare, Safety and Welfare, which includes animal control, but also includes other things beyond animal control, is the topic, and arises from the citizens who care, and started the shelter back in the 80s and 90s, I think. And I'm, I'm the councilperson who created the Lakewood Animal Safety and Welfare Advisory Board. I was here, I drafted the language we saw on screen. So, I remember, I know why it was created and what it does and all that. And I appreciate the presentation of the administration. The word "is" was used a lot, "this is this, this is not that." That statement is factual, and does, it sounded at times as if it was also saying, "And we can't change it, or we shouldn't change it, because this is the way it ought to be, and we don't want to consider something else." So, I hope that's not the intent of the presentation, because, for example, in the first slide, or the second slide, we said, "The city's animal shelter responsibilities are this, but not that." We can change that, we can modify that. I think the conversation that I've had with animal volunteers and advocates in the community is that we want to evaluate what we're doing to improve on a continuous basis, just as we want to do that for every other city function. And so, I hope there's a receptivity by the administration and by our city team to always evaluating what we're doing for improvements, for enhancements. I think it's very fair, and I appreciate the budget data and the granularity of the positional description to be clear about what we're doing, what we're not doing, what we're set up to, structured to do, so, so that we're performing as designed. And I think that was a lot of what we heard today. But, but if there's a change that we ought to make, we can consider that, right? And I think I want us to improve. So, if today, the facts are that we're an animal control facility and staff, that's fine. But if there are ways that we can improve to be more than that, then let's talk about that and be open to it. Let's also, in support of the presentation, I'd be clear-eyed that we want to have the right personnel and budget, because we don't want to get out over our skis, or do something that's not sustainable, or practical, or any. And so, I applaud that thoughtfulness. But I do hope that we're not just saying no to stuff. And I got to say, in all my years, I've never seen a letter with nine signatures opposing a proposal to create a new position that has the feel of a campaign to oppose something, rather than a dialogue with a council member who's proposing a concept to enhance the city's tools and toolsets and capacities.
If I may respond to a couple of that?
Sure.
Because there's, I just want to make sure we address them. I think the nature of the presentation was to provide, it was informational, just to level-set, to make sure that everyone was on the same page of current roles, current responsibilities. So, it's not to say that we're not constantly looking to approve, to improve. So, I just want to level-set there. The nature of the letter, and this has been addressed prior, is that we're constantly looking at needs throughout the, throughout the city in terms of adding additional staff. So, the letter indicates, you know, there's certainly a needed water sewer, we want to add someone for sustainability for the Climate Action Plan. In working closely with the members of our animal control, this just is an unnecessary position. Doesn't mean we can change some of the responsibilities of the supervisor position by any means. It's just that added staff isn't necessarily needed. But we'd be more than happy to, and have been, had multiple conversations about how we can make some shifts in current roles and responsibilities. So, I hope that kind of answers some of the questions.
With your permission, Mr. Chair, it's a helpful dialogue, I think. Mayor, I appreciate the clarification very much. It's good to get, you know, an accurate state-of-play presentation. The HR director did a lot of work on this. The, and, you know, so it's also, I think, appropriate that the administration is cautious about head count, that's a cost driver. We've traditionally been careful about that. So, if the, if the goal of my colleague's proposal is to enhance what we're doing, or find ways to, to create capacity to enhance what we're doing, I welcome that. And so, if the tool is not necessarily to add a position, or I see that AFSCME Local Aid, that's another uncommon letter to receive, I certainly respect their perspective. They prefer to not have a supervisor, but rather an employee of a different classification. So, the details do matter, but we can work to say, all right, well, our response is not no, but rather, here's how we would work to improve this. Now, I also hear- Now, I also hear, it sounds as if the administration's view is that we're, we're doing a pretty darn good job of, of what we're doing already. And so maybe there's a difference of views on how, how much improvement might be needed or not. Maybe improvement's the wrong term. Enhancement might be, you know, I think, I think is, is really what we're talking, or potentially considering is, we're doing a good job of what we're doing. Could we enhance it somehow? Right now, the structure is one thing. Could we find a way to incorporate more than what it is today? To me, that's, I think, the, the tone and tenor of the, of the hopeful conversation. I certainly receptive to it. I don't claim to be the expert, so I, I appreciate hearing all the data today and continuing the conversation. I just hope that, you know, e- even if, let's say, we said, all right, in 2024, we don't think we have a budget capacity, but we'll keep our thinking caps on and look for ways to leverage the volunteer enthusiasm, expertise, volunteer time, and donations and all the rest. But also not ask the volunteers to unrealistically shoulder more than is feasible for volunteers to do. You know, let's, let's keep figuring this out. That's, that's my two bits. Thanks.
And if I could just, just respond?
Sure.
No, thank you for that, Councilman. And we, we've had a few meetings with members of CCLAS. I don't think we've formally met with LSWAB, but I know there's been some email exchanges. And I'd say, from those meetings, we, we've had implemented some, I would think, positive changes in terms of formalizing a form for, for medical needs. Claus helps us with medical needs above what was discussed today, today in terms of vaccinations, spay-neuter. So we formalized that form. We're also still working through the process of formalizing the TNR program that was brought to our attention, that was happening. So we want to make sure that we're following the ordinance, ordinances on the book, or finalizing a form. We want to get that on the website too, soon, hopefully very soon. And then in terms of funding and support, we would, we would love to have, you know, donations coming to the shelter. So we're certainly open to that, and we're certainly open to continue dialogues, as we always are, on improving the nature of our operations. But in terms of the, the specific request for the personnel, and I think that was kind of what we were addressing, is we don't see the need for the personnel, but let's have an open dialogue of how we can improve.
Thank you. And, and just because we're at time, or just passed it, Vice President Kepel, if anybody, and then if any other members of council wanted to chime in, if any other members of the public wanted to chime in, and then I don't anticipate us proceeding with anything or adopting anything. We'll probably defer this for another committee meeting, I would, I would think, from here. But Vice President Kepel, at least that's my thinking right now.
If we're going to, I do have quite a few questions. So if we're going to defer this, I can defer those questions.
Oh, we're here. Go ahead.
So a few questions. So I appreciate the work that went into this presentation, as well as the volunteer service and thoughtfulness of LSWAB for putting this in front of us. When we ask our residents to serve on committees, I think it's very important that we, and to advise us, I think it's extremely important that we actually spend some time thoughtfully considering that advice. And that's what we're doing tonight. So one of those questions, though, is about, I would like to dig into this, not necessarily tonight, but I'd like to learn more from LSWAB about what, I know Dr. Danleger, you mentioned that you weren't sure what those cutting-edge practices in animal care are. So I think we would need to turn to LSWAB to find out more information about that. And maybe that's a question for the future. I do have a question about, so looking at the website, it looks like currently the shelter is only listed as being open Monday through Friday and closed on Saturday and Sunday, rather than seven days a week. So what is the, is that looking to shift? Is that part of the changes in staffing that we're discussing in terms of, once we're fully staffed?
So currently, the shelter is open Monday through, the shelter itself is open 12 to 4, Monday through Friday. There is an animal control officer on duty Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30. Once we come back up to staff, as soon as they're trained, we will have seven-day animal control, seven days a week. The shelter will go back to being open Tuesday through Saturday at the regular hours. Like Tuesday was 12 to 6, Wednesday was 12 to 4, Thursday 12 to 6, Friday 12 to 4, and Saturday was also 12 to 4. So it would open the shelter up on a Saturday. We would have an animal control officer available on Sunday that's not available right now. So once we're back up to staff, that, that covers all those hours.
Okay. So what happens if someone wants to, you know, someone finds either a stray or feral cat? They wouldn't necessarily know because they're not the expert you are. But, and they want, you know, to take it to the shelter? What happens when the shelter is not open?
They have to wait till the shelter's open. So usually if they have it in a feral, it, there's a difference between feral and domesticated cats. So if they're getting a feral cat, they're usually trapping it. So they, they should be calling the shelter ahead of time to discuss about setting the trapping protocol so they know how to set the trap and when to set it. So they know that if they catch a cat, when they can bring it into the shelter. If they trap a domesticated cat, then they should also, if they're, they're trapping them, then they should also call the shelter ahead of time so they have a cat in a trap and they know what they're doing. They just find a cat on the street, and someone's walking down the street and says, hey, I found his cat. They can bring it to the shelter anytime it's open. But if there's, if the shelter's not open, they'd have to hold the cat till the next day.
And if they were, let's say, we, we had a gentleman in front of us talking about a fox that was bothering him, and we, someone from the city referred them to an extermination company. So if there's extermination companies trapping animals in Lakewood, do they need to check with you ahead of time in case they catch a cat?
No, not on, not private trappers, no.
Okay.
Because private trappers have to have a license to be trapping. So they have a, a whole scenario of list, things that they have to do to maintain that license. There's people that trap, put traps on their roofs of houses for raccoons and squirrels, private trappers. And they have to remove that animal within the 24-hour time period. So no, they don't have to check with us on that.
Okay. So I, because I don't know that our ordinance actually distinguishes between, this is just a thought process, but I'll have to, I'll have to go back and look at it, if it actually distinguishes between trappers for that purpose or TNR. But neither here nor there, and I was going to, so in the list of, what happens? So if we're not fully staffed, where there isn't someone there seven days a week, how do the animals get fed and checked on? So you're going in extra hours?
That's correct.
Okay. And then when the TNR application process, and this might, I'm not sure whose application process is finalized, I know the way that orange is currently written, it says, under the Public Safety Director, or assuming designee. So would those be coming to the shelter supervisor position? How, what's the anticipated process for that?
Yeah, I think we were trying to work through that. At the end, it would come through me, but we had a discussion. I think it's important to go through the shelter supervisor so that they are aware of, you know, the trappings going on in their community. And obviously, Jack and his team know way more about this than I do. For instance, Jack explained to me how we don't want to have TNRs, what, from October to March, just for the weather.
Anytime the temperature falls below 34 degrees.
So, so those type of details, I don't know. So I think it's important to have the, the individuals who are managing this day in and day out, for them to sign off, for them to be aware, for them to have the contact information. And then it just formally comes to my desk, as does many other things.
And if I may add a little side note to that also, by going, by getting that, then they should be able to, and I think we're in the process of trying to figure that out, is report back to how their trapping procedures went. How many were trapped? And so we know, we can keep track of the numbers that way.
And I believe, aren't you working with LSWAB on the difference between stray and feral?
Yes.
Because that's a, that's a caveat within the TNR program as well, so I know that's being worked through.
Correct. I brought that up at our last LSWAB meeting with them.
And then you had, there was a list in the, about how many animals, I think specifically cats were the largest number of how many were expired. So of currently, with that, those numbers of how many cats are expired in each year, do we know, like, how many of those are because they come in with health problems? Or is it that we're running out of room or?
The expired, the expired cats?
Mm-hmm.
Pretty much those are the people that, that are trapping feral cats that we go out and pick up. And so when we go in and out and pick them up, we can pretty much know they're feral. They come back to the shelter, and no one's going to adopt the cat. They can't pet and hold.
Okay. I think the rest of my questions are really more for LSWAB when we have time to chat with them.
All right. Colleagues, any further comment? Appreciate the thorough discussion between the administration and my colleagues.
Thank you.
Any members of the public interested in speaking to this topic tonight? Okay. I think we'll just move forward with concluding our meeting unless there was any further comment on this. This stays on our, our committee, the whole agenda, so long as we don't take action on it. Councilman Baker?
Yeah, I just have one, one comment. And I, you know, appreciate LSWAB and CCLAS. And then the administration obviously put a lot of time into this. And I think that's part of this process, is so that we can really dig into these issues and understand them. We have an incredible opportunity with some new hires in the department to really kind of make sure that we're delivering the best we can for the public. The one thing I will say is I think there's some, you know, the confusion about like a shelter manager. I think the need is for, you know, maybe, and the discussion is to have a discussion about whether or not some roles are different between animal control and then a shelter. And so it could be, I, I think we're getting sometimes caught up in like the nomenclature of it being a manager as opposed to a coordinator, as opposed to even a part-time employee that may be able to come and provide some of that, right? So it's not a full FTE, it doesn't have full benefits. So there are ways in which we can, could be a union member, could not be a union member. So I think we're kind of hitting some tripwires here that are taking us away from maybe the point of the conversation. I think the point of the conversation is to examine these issues, have a discussion about it, and see whether they're, you know, kind of a worthy goal to try to get to. And I'm glad that CCLAS and LSWAB is kind of pushing us towards best practices. Now, are we always going to get there? Do we have the resources, do we have the budget? That's for us to decide, and that's what we're doing. So I just appreciate the discussion.
No, likewise, Councilman. I, I, I think I hear from my colleagues, of course, from the mayor and her administration, and from the recommendations, like some room here for us to, for to come to some agreement, getting past some of the semantics of things and getting to the highest and best practices that Lakewood can reach financially, feasibly. So I hope that word salad made some sense. Okay. Any further comment? Councilwoman Marks?
I just would like to thank everybody for coming to the table to have this discussion. I think that as we're moving forward into the new shelter, we just need to keep our eyes and ears open for opportunities on how we might be able to do things more efficiently and better. And that, and as, as we hire new people and bring them on board, maybe some of those responsibilities are identified in those job descriptions as well. But I think a lot of it becomes confusing because of semantics. Even the letter that I got from, that we got from AFSMI. And I did talk to them today and explain that we were not looking to replace somebody outside of the union. We weren't looking, we were just looking to identify the needs of the shelter. So I think this is a good conversation to have, and as we move forward, we can continue to address this. And I just want to make sure that Jack doesn't have to be there seven days a week, 24 hours a day. And, and I appreciate the fact that I have in the past trapped feral cats on my property. And when I called, it was probably Elaine that I talked to, who said, you can't trap them on this day or this night because nobody's there to pick them up the next day. So having an educated public is very important as well. So I want to thank everybody for their open discussion and their open mind about this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comment? Move to adjourn, committee as a whole? Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All who's in favor? Aye opposed. That motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you.